We are now recording.
Thank you, Mr. Kirschman. Since it is four o'clock, we call this meeting of the Cochise County Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Let's say the Pledge of Allegiance first, please. Thank you very much. Now I'd like to read the ground rules. Welcome to this meeting. Here are the rules. Please turn off your cell phones, or at least silence the ringers. Please be polite to other stakeholders. No applause, no booing, no cheering. If you desire to speak, fill out a speaker information form and submit to the planner before the start of the meeting. This is not required for the docket applicants. Speakers must use the microphone to capture comments in the minutes. This is over here. We have a speaker's clock, and the time limits are five minutes for call to public, ten minutes for applicants, five minutes for supporters or those opposed, and then five minutes for applicant's rebuttal. Each elected county supervisor appoints three commissioners to staggered four-year terms. Up to three are from cities, at least six from unincorporated areas. A commissioner's service is pro bono. A quorum is five commissioners. A majority vote passes a motion, a tie vote fails. For special use permits, a tie vote triggers a rehearing at the next meeting. For special use docket decisions. Special use dockets are approved by the commission. Appeals of special use decisions can be made to the Board of Supervisors and filed within fifteen days of commission approval. Appeal procedures can be obtained on the county website. For assistance, contact the case planner. For other docket decisions. Dockets other than special use requests result in recommendations forwarded by the commission to the Board of Supervisors. To voice disagreements with these recommendations, attend the Board of Supervisors' public hearing dealing with the docket. Next, we do roll call. Mr. Montgomery? I think he got tied up in traffic. Mr. Lindbach?
Here.
Nathan Watkins?
Present.
Albert Young?
Here.
Jerry Gonzalez? Mr. Markowski?
Here.
Larry Saunders?
Here.
Ms. Welch? Ms. Welch is absent. We do have five members present, which forms a quorum. I'm sorry, six. I'm here. This is the time for call to public. Pursuant to ARS Section 38-431.1, this is an opportunity for the public to comment. Individuals are invited to address the commission on any issue within the commission's jurisdiction. Since commissioners may not discuss items that are not specifically identified on the agenda, commission action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, responding to any criticism, or scheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date. I have no forms. Is there anyone online? Hearing none. We move to old business. I did forget the minutes. Forgive me. Let's move to approval of previous month's minutes. Does anyone have any comments or corrections on the minutes?
I believe this is for March. It should be for April.
Can we get Mr. Saunders' tablet in the right place?
My, my.
Are there any comments on the minutes?
No, I'm.
Do we have a motion to approve? Mr. Saunders?
Second.
Mr. Watkins, second. We'll have a roll call vote, please. Mr. Lindbach?
Here.
You approve the minutes?
Oh, I'm sorry, approved, yes.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Markowski?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
I was absent, so I abstain. Last month's minutes are approved. Now we can move to the public hearing. This first item is RZ 23-06, named Dill. It is rezoned from R36 to RU4.
Chair, I missed the old business.
Not doing very well, am I? So we pause on this docket item, and we go to the old business. Old business regarding docket MDP 22-01 and RZ 23-05, called Old Stewart Road. It's a request for a master development plan and rezoning to allow a retail and entertainment complex northeast of Wilcox. This item was on the agenda, but the staff is requesting the item be continued to a future meeting to allow the applicant time to address staff concerns. Do I have?
Chair.
Mr. Markowski?
I move that we replace this page with docket on the table until such time as staff's concerns are satisfied, and they recommend bringing it back to the table for action.
I can.
Thank you, Mr. Lindbach. Is that the correct language, staff? Are we tabling it?
Correct, yeah, we're tabling it to a date.
Thank you very much. Let's have a roll call vote. Mr. Lindbach?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Markowski?
Aye.
Larry Saunders?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. This item is delayed. Now we can move to RZ 23-06. This is a rezone from R36 to RU4. Would I please have the planner's report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The applicant is Mr. Seth Wilson. I do believe he has logged in online this evening to speak to the request. Current zoning is R36, which is residential, one dwelling per thirty-six thousand square feet. Proposed zoning is RU4, which is rural, one dwelling per four acres. It is in growth category D and designated as rural residential. There is no area plan. Current uses are ag and recreational vehicle and some accessory buildings. Proposed use is a permitted single-family residence. So it's located at 1050 South Deal Road in Benson. Parcel is identified as 12337007, and totals five acres. As you can see on the aerial, it is adjacent to and actually crosses the San Pedro River. It is in a very rural area, just outside of the city of Benson. Lots of the surrounding parcels consist of various agricultural uses, and so the request to RU4 makes sense in this area. This is the applicant's site plan. Again, you can see the river. There is a very large erosion hazard setback on this property, so it forces the homes to be located against or adjacent to the road, and then essentially prohibiting development in the future. So having the ability to do one dwelling per thirty-six hundred, or thirty-six thousand square feet on the site really does not make sense. These are some photographs of the site and the surrounding area. Staff finds that the request complies with eleven of the applicable rezoning factors that we used to analyze the request. Request would be in keeping with the character of the existing development of the area. We find no factors against approval. With that, I will be happy to answer any questions following the applicant's statement.
Thank you, Mr. Kirschman. The public hearing on this item is now open, and I call for the applicant's statement. Mr. Wilson?
Yes, good afternoon. Can y'all hear me okay?
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to present. Robert, thank you also for presenting extremely well. My desire is just to keep the property in line with the surrounding properties. Again, talking to the setbacks from the river, there's really only one area where we would be able to build our home. I don't find it necessary to keep the, the R36 zoning and, and really just hoping to keep our single-family residence and the ag status within the property. That's all I have to present.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. This is the time for comments from other persons, either in favor of or against. I have no forms. Is there anyone online? Hearing none. Mr. Wilson, do you waive your time for rebuttal since there were no comments?
Yes, please.
Thank you. The public hearing is now closed. This is the time for commission discussion. Are there any questions from the commission for the applicant or staff? Hearing none. Can we have your summary, Mr. Kirschman?
Thank you. So staff does recommend approval of the docket. We do not have any additional or special conditions on this, and there's a sample motion on the screen for you this evening.
And now call for the motion, please.
Chairman.
Mr. Mark.
Yes. I move that we recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors for the rezoning of docket RZ 3206, located on parcel 12337007, from RU36 to RU4. Factors in favor of approval constitute findings of fact.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Lindbach, thank you. We will do a roll call vote. Mr. Lindbach?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Markowski?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. This docket has been approved. Thank you. Now move on to the next item. This is docket RZ 23-07. John and Larissa Peters. Mr. Coxworth, can we get your presentation?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the commission, this is a request by Anthony and Larissa Peters. I had that wrong in the memo. To rezone twenty-nine acres from R36, minimum lot size thirty-six thousand square feet, to RU2, minimum lot size, two acres. The parcel is located at 731 North Taylor Road in Wilcox. The applicants are requesting this amendment so they may, in the future, apply for special use applications for guest lodging. The near-term use of the property will be a lavender farm. Downzoning this property will not negatively impact the surrounding properties. The staff did mail notices to surrounding property owners within three hundred feet. We did receive two letters in support of this request. This is just a, the twenty-nine acres is there in the middle. The red is a commercially zoned property. It's zone GB. Just an aerial. It's currently developed, as you can see. Looks like a little farm, twenty-nine acres. And that concludes my presentation. And I don't know if the applicants are in the audience or not. Yes, Mr. Peters is here.
Thank you, Mr. Coxworth. This is then the time for the hearing to open and call for the applicant's statement. Could you please come forward, Mr. Peters? Please state your name and address before speaking.
Anthony Peters, 225 North Sunset Strip, Wilcox, Arizona, 85643.
Thank you.
What we'd like to do is have almost an agrotourism, growing lavender, and emphasizing the area of Wilcox, bringing people in to show them what's grown here, what the crops, the animals, all of that stuff, and of course, the wine country there. We're not wanting to change much about Wilcox. That's why we live there, so. The surrounding area, there are lavender farm, there is a lavender farm, and there's lots of vineyards. And that's why, and we are going with a drought tolerant lavender, so minimal water use to not impact our water basin. That's everything I've got.
Thank you, sir. We may have questions in a moment. We'll, we'll call you back.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I would just like the record to reflect that member Montgomery arrived at four fifteen.
Not my fault.
Thank you.
Record jumped on Highway 92. The road was closed. Thank you.
So now we can open the hearing to comments from other persons regarding RZ 2307, either in favor or against. I have no speaker's forms for that. Is there anyone online that wishes to speak? Hearing none. We will assume you would waive your time for rebuttal, sir, since no one had anything to say?
Yes.
Thank you. The public hearing is now closed. This is the time for commission discussion. Do I have any questions for either the applicant or staff from the commission?
I have a question from staff.
Mr. Watkins?
It's just my lack of research, whatever. What's the advantage going from R36 to RU2?
Under the RU zoning district, there is a more extensive list of special uses that the applicants may apply for. They'd like to apply for potentially educational services, once they have the lavender farm up and running, teach people how to work with lavender to turn into product. They can also apply for a special use permit for guest lodging, and they currently, currently can't do that under the R36 zoning. RU2, normally we would request, or normally an applicant would go to RU4, but the comp plan doesn't allow for rezoning to RU4, only RU2.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Good question. Anyone else? This is the time, please then, for the planning director's summary and recommendation. Mr. Coxworth?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the commission, staff does recommend approval. There are three factors in favor and none against.
Thank you. I'd like to call for the motion, please.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Watkins?
I move to recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors rezoning docket RZ 23-07, located on parcel 202-37-023A, from R36 to RU2. The factors in favor of approval constituting the findings of fact.
In a second. Mr. Markowski, thank you. Is there any further discussion of this motion from the commission? Hearing none, we will do a roll call vote. Mr. Montgomery, are you prepared on this?
I think in all fairness, I might abstain. I have read this online earlier in the week, but I did not hear the presentation right now. I think that would only be fair.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lindbach?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez? I'm sorry, Mr. Gonzalez is absent. Mr. Markowski?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The docket, the docket is approved and will be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors. Thank you. The next item is SU 23-09, Buffalo Contract Construction. This is special use authorization to operate a contract construction business on a rural zone parcel. Ms. McLaughlin?
Thank you. Good evening. This is a special use authorization request, docket 2309. The applicant, Josue Flores Zambrano, requests special use authorization to operate a contract construction business on a nineteen-point-one acre parcel, APN 10606019A, in unincorporated Cochise County. The establishment of a contract construction business is subject to special use authorization from the Planning and Zoning Commission and a rural zoning district. The business will be co-located on a parcel with a six-hundred-square-foot home and three-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-five-foot square foot shop. Specifically, the applicant requests the use of approximately twenty thousand square feet, point four or five acres of the parcel for the off-site parking and storage of San Pedro Valley sanitation vehicles and dumpsters. The property is physically located at 375 West Buffalo Lane, Wachukah City, Arizona, 85616. We're indicated on the location map. Mr. Zambrano is with us tonight. Here is the concept plan. The applicant wishes to allow two San Pedro Valley sanitation trucks and, and multiple dumpsters to park on his property. San Pedro Valley Sanitation runs their business out of their San, St. David office at seventy-six West Patton Street, but for their logistical convenience, would like to park their equipment on Mr. Zambrano's property. San Pedro Valley Sanitation offers trash collection to parts of all Cochise County. The private residential uses will remain. There is also an existing privacy fence, which was previously added to the site and will remain. There are no permanent improvements proposed, and the special use is limited to point four or five acres. Were indicated on the site plan in the southeastern corner of the site. Here are some site photos. The top left is from Buffalo Lane looking west. Top right is the privacy fence. The bottom two photos are on the site looking east, and you can see a couple dumpsters there. They're approximately six feet tall, which is the height of the fence, and you can also see one of the sanitation vehicles. The property is zoned RU4, which is rural zoning, one dwelling per four acres. The surrounding area is similarly zoned, with the exception of the parcel to the immediate east, which is zoned light industry. Specifically, the use is consistent with 60107, which states the purpose of the established zoning to allow consideration of more intense non-residential uses as special uses that are inappropriate and more densely populated urban suburban areas. The proposed use would likely be inappropriate in an urban suburban location. In addition, the applicant proposes placement closest to the parcel zoned light industry. There are ten factors we use to evaluate all special use proposals. In this case, eight of those factors apply. It fully complies with five factors. It complies with conditions regarding three factors. Development along major streets and hazardous material factors do not apply. I do recommend some conditions to mitigate potential off-site impacts and traffic concerns. This includes entering into a private maintenance agreement for Buffalo Lane, no non-residential trash storage to be stored within the sanitation trucks or in the roll-offs, limiting the number of trucks to no more than three and roll-offs to no more than fifteen at one time. I also recommend a couple waivers. One is regarding the parking space requirements. There will be no employees or customers on site, so it's not really necessary. The second waiver is regarding the landscape requirements related to growth category B requirements. However, the applicant shall maintain a visual barrier with fencing where indicated by the site plan in perpetuity of the use. I did not receive any public comments regarding this item. In terms of factors in favor of the request, it's consistent with the goals and policy of the comp plan, the purpose of the zoning district. It fully complies, at least partially, partially, with all applicable factors used to evaluate special use requests. Visually, it's not out of character or scale for the area. And as I mentioned in my staff memo, this parcel was previously industrial zoned, and there was mining on site. And it's at the very end of Buffalo Lane. Finally, the requested use would serve a small locally-owned business. That provides sanitation services to Cochise County residents. In terms of factors against the request, I do believe some conditions are necessary to mitigate impacts, and the lot is within the hundred-year floodplain, which is generally less suitable for development. I will now pause for the applicant's presentation and discussion from the commission. Mr. Zambrano in attendance tonight, I believe.
Thank you. Is it Mr. Flores or Mr. Zambrano?
Um, Flores.
Okay, thank you. Please restate your name and your address, sir.
Josue Flores Zambrano. And my address is fifty-four East Via Papaya. That's my residence address. The address for the special request is 375 West Buffalo Lane, Wachukah City. So, as you mentioned, the request is, I owe part of this equipment, and Mr. Jeff from Som曾Valley purchased it from me, and as he was there to purchase the equipment, he liked the place to park his vehicles because it makes it convenient. The landfills are very close to Cochise County and Wachukah City, and the other businesses that do the same thing there within a mile from the area where I'm at, so he thought that was very convenient, so that's why we're requesting this today.
Is there anything else you'd like to share?
No, not really.
Thank you, then.
Thank you.
We may have questions for you. We'll call you back up.
Okay.
This is the time for comment from other persons, either in favor of or opposed. I have no speaker forms. Is there anyone online? Hearing none. Did you think of anything else to say, Mr. Zambrano? No. No one has said anything in comment. The hearing, the public hearing is now closed. This is the time for the commission discussion. Do I have any applicant, I'm sorry, do I have any questions from the commission? No questions?
Thank you.
All right. Ms. McLaughlin, can we please have the summary and recommendation?
Staff recommends conditional approval of this request. If the commission wishes to grant approval, staff recommends the following conditions. Condition one, the applicant will be required to enter into a private maintenance agreement to participate in the maintenance of a non-maintained road, specifically Buffalo. Condition two states non-residential trash for the proposed special use shall be stored, shall not be stored in the trucks or bins on site. Condition three limits the number of trucks and bins on the site at one time to thirteen and fifteen respectively. The final two are the waiver requests I just discussed, standard condition waiver forms, permitting timeframes, permitting responsibilities, and modifications still apply. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any additional questions, and there's a sample motion on the slide for the commission's consideration.
Thank you. I'd like to call for the motion, please.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Markowski?
I move to approve docket SU 2309, Buffalo Contract Construction, with conditions of approval and waivers recommended by staff. Factors in favor of approval constitute the findings of fact.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Saunders. Is there any discussion before we vote? Hearing none. By roll call, Mr. Montgomery?
Aye.
Mr. Lindbach?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez? I'm sorry, keep doing that. Mr. Markowski?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Your request for special use has passed. Thank you. Our next item is SU 23-11, Winchester Solar. This is a special use authorization to construct, operate, and maintain a proposed solar energy power plant and battery energy storage system in a rural zoning district. I believe Ms. Sarah Bourne is representing. Thank you. Hold on. We'll get the, the planner's report first, and then we'll call you to speak. Ms. McLaughlin?
Thank you. Good evening. This is a special use authorization request, docket 2311. The applicant, Winchester Solar One and Two LLC, represented by Sarah Bourne, requests special use authorization to construct, operate, and maintain proposed one-hundred-and-sixty-megawatt solar energy power plant-
power plant and battery energy solar system, a project on 3,584 acres of land, with the option to expand to up to 500 megawatts on the same property. The property is primarily undeveloped. The exact parcel numbers and acreages are included in my staff report. The general location is shown on the slide. Here are some site photos. The property is immediately north of I-10, between 191 and the Taylor Road interchanges. The area is flat. Minimal changes in elevation, not a lot of trees. It's mostly grass. It's a combination of state land and privately-owned parcels. Here's the concept plan. On the concept, the applicant notes project boundaries, flood zones, historical drainage patterns, site access, privately-owned parcel limits, and a potential location for onsite substation and battery yard. Here is the zoning. The entire site is zoned RU4. Nearly the entire project is within D rural land use, except for approximately 175 acres on the northeastern limits, which has land use of the developing. Our comp plan encourages the use of solar energy resources and Element E renewable energy. In part, the purpose statement of rural zoning states RU zoning districts are established to allow consideration of some more intense non-residential uses as special uses that are inappropriate, more densely populated urban suburban areas. Solar energy power plants are considered special uses within rural zoning. They are land-intensive, non-residential uses that are not appropriate or even viable in more densely populated urban suburban areas of the county. There are 10 factors used to evaluate all special use requests. In this case, all 10 apply. The first two we just discussed regarding development along major streets, the applicant proposes one access point off of the 191 interchange with I-10. As stated in the application, during the height of construction, which is expected to last six to eight months, approximately 15 to 30 trucks and 160 passenger vehicles can be expected to arrive onsite daily. Regarding services and infrastructure, this is an unmanned site that is intended to collect energy. The requirements for services and infrastructure once constructed are minimal and much less compared to most uses. Next, site development standards. The applicant requests a waiver from setback requirements to internal parcel boundaries. Instead, the applicant requests the setbacks are only applied to the exterior of the project boundaries. The case planner supports this request due to the mix of public and private parcel ownership, which would make combining the lots infeasible. Regarding lock coverage, Section 182403D exempts ground-mounted systems from lock coverage. Foreign pervious service standards, if the sole under the collector is maintained with perennial vegetated ground cover and not compacted. From a project functionality standpoint, recent studies have shown moving rows of solar panels farther apart allows greater wind flow, which can result in lower module temperatures and higher energy output. Greater spacing is also believed to reduce the lace of lake effect, which can confuse water birds. Staff recommends two conditions of approval. The project owner shall maintain the project site with perennial vegetated ground cover, non-compacted soil. Regrations not required during project construction. Any existing vegetation will be mowed rather than removed completely. The project owner shall exclusively use PV panels with anti-reflectivity coating. That's integral to the panel, which shall minimize glare from the site. Regarding hazardous materials, this is primarily a concern if panels are damaged and/or during decommissioning. I recommend a condition that all panels shall be regularly inspected and continuously maintained in good working order and removed in a timely manner if broken or damaged. For off-site impacts, we recommend to reduce the optical illusion of water that closely spaced panels can create. The project shall be designed with no less than a 12-foot distance between all cracker rows. And many of the specific recommendations I'll mention are in line with game and fish recommendations, which leads me to two more conditions. One being the applicant shall submit a completed wetland delineation confirming the Army Corps prayer to commercial permit issuance. Wetland features shall be avoided, except where crossings are needed for roads and cables. And the second being, to the extent feasible, non-fenced wildlife corridors within project boundaries shall be reserved near washes or areas determined by game and fish to be appropriate for wildlife highway crossing. The applicant submitted the studies listed on the slide at the county's request. All were attached to the application at the time of application submitted for the commission's review. I also provided a brief summation of each of the memos, or each of these in my memo and on the slide. Although zoning now requires wildlife-friendly fencing, it does not specify which type of measures are necessary. These are site-specific. We recommend a condition that the applicant shall reserve a six-to-eight-inch gap between the ground surface and the bottom of the perimeter fencing. The commission probably recalls the recent McMill solar project that it approved. This project's under reconstruction, and it has provided a similar gap. In terms of public input, letters were mailed to all property owners within a quarter-mile of the subject property. A legal ad was published in the Sierra Vista Herald, and posted legal notices were placed on the property. To date, staff has received four responses. One letter provided a mixed support and opposition response. The remaining three responses were from two landowners, both in opposition, and specific concerns are noted on this slide. Factors in favor of this request: The project's consistent with the applicable policies of the comp plan and the purposes of the rural zoning district. The project complies with most of the criteria used to evaluate special use requests and most applicable site development standards and conditions. Once completed, the project would generate negligible levels of traffic and minimal water services and infrastructure requirements. The project would serve as a source of clean energy, offsetting greenhouse gas emissions, producing the need to generate electricity from fossil fuels. And more specifically, this project is proposed to replace energy produced from the retired San Juan and Four Corners power plants. Both were coal-powered. Factors against approval: The project construction will likely generate fugitive dust, general compatibility, aesthetic concerns. The surrounding terrain is flat, and the area is undeveloped. The scale, visibility, and massing of the project can be of concern. Avian concerns: There is potential for bird fatalities or injuries to occur if avian species mistake the solar panels for open water. Wildlife and biological concerns: Game and fish stated in their view, the proposal, the landscape in which the project is proposed, provides important movement pathways for wildlife. The project risks reducing habitat connectivity and wildlife movement migration unless specific design features are incorporated to provide a pathway for the wildlife. Letters of opposition were received from two property owners. I will now pause for the applicant's presentation, discussion from the commission. The applicant is in attendance tonight and would like to present a brief PowerPoint as well.
Thank you. The public portion is now open. Could we please have the applicant's statement? Ms. Bourne? If you want to jointly present, please give both names and addresses, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair and commissioners, for hearing our case tonight. It's nice to meet you all. I'm Sarah Bourne with Torch Clean Energy. My address is 62 Cannon Park, Boulder, Colorado, 80302.
Thank you for the opportunity tonight. My name is Scott Leach. I live at 2800 North Lake Ridge Trail in Boulder, Colorado. I think we have a presentation that's being teed up, but I can start. Like was mentioned, we work, we're here on behalf of the project. The company that we work for is Torch Clean Energy. We have, just by way of background, 500 megawatts of operating projects across the country. The majority of those are here in Arizona. We have another 600 or 700 megawatts that are under construction right now across the country, and we have several thousand megawatts of projects that are in, near construction. Hopefully, this is one of them. If you don't mind going to the next slide, please. One slide back. We actually have a long history working with Cochise County. One of the very first projects we did was the wind and solar farm that's located up in Antelope Valley called the Red Horse Two and Three Projects. Those projects have now been operating for quite a while here in the community and was kind of the inspiration for this project. I'll kind of get a little bit more into that history. We have another project that's up in Mojave County that I think was built in 2018, 2019 timeframe, and we have done two smaller projects, but equally as important for the Southern Arizona Cooperative Utilities, Trego Electric. We have a project that's out by Oracle Junction. We have a project in the city of Morana. So, in Southern Arizona in particular, we have spent a lot of time trying to find the right site and kind of the right mix for how to locate these projects locally. Our main focus as a company is to the development and the construction of large utility-scale renewable energy projects. We've been at it since the mid-2000s, and we pride ourselves on trying to work locally to integrate these projects into the community. If you go on to the next slide. It might be surprising to hear this, but we started working with the county staff earlier this year, but we've actually been going through the technical studies on this project since 2020. And our approach to these types of projects is to make sure that all the technical and biological and local challenges are addressed before we come and present you tonight. It would have been logical for us to expand this project from the existing solar site up in Antelope Valley, and that's originally where we had sited it. After extensive discussions with folks that were living up there in that area, we decided to change the location of that site and bring it to a location from less productive ranchland down into an area that was further away from the substation that the project hopes to interconnect to. Is there a time limit? Okay. And hence where the project is located right now. There are some important factors from the site, from our point of view. It will not use any of the county roads to deliver equipment. It'll come right off of I-10. It is on, from a ranching perspective, quite marginal land that supports cattle, and it's quite remote from all of the neighbors. I think, you know, one of the closest neighbors is a quarter mile away or half a mile away. And so, all of those factors are important to us in trying to locate this project. Obviously, on the southern part of the site, there is an interstate highway and not a ton of room to expand in that area. I think I'll turn it over to Sarah here to allow for some more details and some of the other additional information and studies that we perform as part of the project.
Great, thank you. I think I'm realizing in the last week that my eyesight is quickly deteriorating because I can't see the screen across from me, but I put it together, so I should remember it. So, one of the factors, I think, that everybody in the county is well aware of is just the interface with Fort Pachuka. So, just wanted to put this slide together because this wasn't in the application itself, but that we are outside the Fort Pachuka Cone of Silence, and we're about 50 miles from the fort itself. So, just wanted to highlight that point. Can you guys? Great. You guys have had quite a bit of solar projects, so you probably know about all these components. I just like to include these in the presentation. You know, part of this is just some of the projects that were under construction and what they look like, you know, what the racking is. So, when you install these projects, you have a steel foundation, and you use their piles essentially, and you pound them into ground. And then you have the tracking system that goes on top of that. We have some fencing. In this case, we'll be using deer fence, eight-foot deer fence. That's what Arizona Game and Fish recommends, and it's really what the industry is going towards anyways. And then you have your inverters and transformers. Those usually sit on skids, or they send out on concrete foundations. And then lastly, which is different than, you know, new to the world really, are the batteries. These are Tesla batteries. This is a picture from a project that we just recently installed, and these are really unique systems in that everything is inclusive in the system. There was a point in time when batteries were developed much differently than they are now. Now, everything's mostly integrated into the system. It's one nice combined unit, and they store the power so that you can turn your lights on at night with the renewable energy. Visual analysis. I included this slide because this is, from a neighbor perspective, this area is the most concerning or would be the most concerning. This is taken about a quarter mile to the northeast of the project itself. You can see, well, you can't really see, actually. The panels themselves are really hard to see a quarter mile from the project. So, the panels generally sit about five to six feet off the ground. At full tilt, the panels are 60 degrees, so you might be about seven feet in total height with vegetation and whatnot from a distance of a quarter mile. It's really hard to see these panels. Go to the next slide. Okay, the other big component of this one is wildlife analysis, given its proximity to the Wilcox Playa. We did a little bit more than we might usually do. You know, we did a bio report, and then there's been a lot of concerns around the impacts that these solar facilities do have on birds, particularly water birds. A lot of that concern is mostly focused on concentrated solar. I will say, you know, in talking to some of the projects that we have operating for the last 10 years and talking to our O&M guys, which I just did a ribbon cutting yesterday for a project up in the town of Morana, and they said in the last 10 years, they found two dead birds. That doesn't mean there weren't more, but it's not something that does happen all the time because the panels are spaced, and they're also often at an angle. They're only flat for about an hour of the day, so something important to consider there. And, oh, you can stay on that slide. Thanks. And I can't read it very well, but we had some of our consultants, SWCA, who is a, there's one gentleman in particular who's a specialist in the bird world, do a bunch of research on their side and see everything that they could find that was published. There isn't a ton of published data, but there is some published data, and the general consensus from multiple different studies is about .44 bird deaths per acre. And then I think the number of you guys, 31 to 38%, of those bird mortalities were due to electrocution, which I thought was interesting. So, modern panels use a non-reflective coating. So, early panels did not do this. Modern panels all use this. Concentrated solar obviously does not, so this is one of the things we agreed to with Game and Fish. That's an easy one. The other thing in talking with our consultants and also talking with Game and Fish, one of the big concerns was the sandhill cranes. The sandhill cranes can land and take off on ground, unlike some of the other water birds. So, both Game and Fish and our consultant didn't think that was a particular issue in this area, so wanted to highlight that. And then Christine highlighted the 12 feet between rows of panels. That's something that we negotiated and worked with Arizona Game and Fish on. And then the other thing we're working through with them right now in their connectivity department is, and we're also going to be working with ADOT, but just figuring out where they plan on putting game crossings, where the culverts are located, and how the animals would go under there, and leaving enough space on the edges of the highway that the animals can get to where they need to go. So, that's an open item still, but something we are working with Game and Fish on. Six-to-eight-inch gap, as Christine mentioned. Another one was, Arizona Game and Fish was concerned with escape ramps while trenching. Trenches aren't open very long, but if they are open for a long period of time, then we'll just put in a little two-by-four, first little critters to get out if they need to. There won't be any night lighting, which I know is a concern for a lot of people around here and also a concern for the birds. There will be some lights at the substation should there be any maintenance that needs to happen. And then the other thing is our O&M team, you know, will be onsite regularly. They do full site inspections quarterly, and they will report any findings of dead birds, locations, and dates. So, that's the summary on wildfire. Operation and maintenance, you guys probably know this, but most of this is done remotely. A project of this size will probably have an O&M office that will be out of Wilcox, so you'll have staff that will work out of there. It's all operated via SCADA system. SCADA alarms go off, and people visit the site in addition to doing regular routine walks at the site and whatnot. Maybe some of you have seen this. I just added this because I thought this was interesting. This was at the red horse farm when a sheep farmer was grazing his sheep out there at the solar facility, so thought I'd put that on there, and I think that's a wrap. Yeah. Thank you, everyone.
We may have questions for you, so stay close.
I welcome them.
This is a time for comment from other persons.
This is a time for comment from other persons. I do have speaker information forms. The first person to speak, please, is Stephen Guy Stockdale. State your name and address for the record, Mr. Stockdale, please.
My name is Stephen Guy Stockdale. I live at 3580 West Holly Drive, Wilcox, Arizona. Go ahead.
Yes, sir, please.
Let me start by giving a brief history of when and why we moved here. My friend George Myers and I have lived in cities all of our lives. We wanted to find a place that was out in the country away from big city. In 2002, my brother-in-law, who lives in Wilcox, found the property that we now live on. We purchased it. In 2003, Mr. Myers built on his property. In 2009, I built online. This is where we want to retire. It's away from everything yet close enough to a small town that we can get what we need. It's perfect. You building your solar farm a quarter mile from our houses kind of defeats that purpose.
Mr. Stockdale?
Yes.
Address the commission, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I read your summary on the effect of the property values. And I find it convenient that you specifically mentioned the study done in Indiana and Illinois. As I said, property values increased by 2%. You also mentioned study done on 11 sites that said the property value decrease is negligible. What you consider negligible, I don't know. But I did some research of my own. I checked at least 10 sites, including the sites that were mentioned. I have listed five sites on a attachment that I have here. Each study said the property values declined by 0.9% to up to 8%, depending on location and distance from the solar farm. But may seem negligible to you is not to us. Even if our property values only decreased by 1%, that's approximately $2,500 or more. Now, that doesn't include what our property values may, that our property values may increase in the future. So we'd even lose more money. One study said the rural area property values decreased more than suburban values. On average, all the studies listed on the attachments had a devaluation of approximately 2.3% of properties within one-half mile of the solar farm. This is not negligible. The study said the closer you are to the solar farm, the higher the decrease in value. However, all the studies did say that there was no decrease in value if the properties were one mile or more away from the farm. I also read your summary that, in your summary, that you originally planned on building your facility further west, but due to cattle grazing land, you decided to move north instead. I don't get it. Is the grass different further west than north? My solution is that you move your farm just enough west that you can move the northern border one mile south of our properties. There's one more thing that I don't understand. Benkor, I think that's his name, has been trying to sell 3,400 acres near Highway 191 for years. Is it too expensive? Do you not want to lose money? Well, neither do we. My next concern is water use. You say in your summary that because of the monsoons, water use is minimal. Our monsoons run from late June to September. That's four months. What about the other eight months? You you say that each panel uses only one-half a gallon of water for each to be cleaned. That means if the panels are 300-watt panels, there are approximately 3,300 pounds per megawatt. There are 528,000 panels, which is 2/64 gallons of water each time you clean them. This is if you live in a perfect world. We have a windy season that goes from December to June. Sometimes the winds are so bad that I can't see my neighbor's house is 350 feet away. Most solar farms clean their panels three times per year or when they lose 3% of their efficiency. I have no doubt that you will be cleaning the panels a lot more often than the two times per year that you stated in your summary. This figure doesn't include the millions of gallons of water that will be used during construction. We are, after all, in a drought. Again, I have attached a list of websites I obtained this information from. My solution for this is a covenant between us and the solar farm that if the water table drops below our well depth, they will provide us with new wells at no cost to us. If the water table doesn't drop, they won't have to spend a penny. In closing, this is the typical story of David Goliath. We bought and built our properties years before you even considered building your solar farm. You all sat around your tables, made your plans without consideration of the lives that you'll be negatively affecting. As usual, you tell the people altruistic values they use in making your decision when in reality, we all know it's truly about money, your money. We have all paid our taxes and the county and state are supposed to support all other people that live here, not just the rich people, not the construction people, not the ranchers. I'm all for clean energy. The world needs, the world needs it, just not literally in our backyard.
Thank you, Mr. Stockdale.
Thank you.
Next, Steve, sorry. Mr. Myers?
You ready? My name is Richard George Myers, Jr. I live at 3554 West Holly Drive. You can see the beginning of our road when they showed their, one of their views on their presentation. My concern is the temperatures. Now, I know they say the temperatures are not going to be bad. However, in the studies that I have gone through, there was three different studies, one from Wisconsin with people from the U of A, one from the OSHA, and one from EPA, which all say that the heat, it will create heat islands, mostly in suburban areas, I understand. But in rural areas, the heat, if the temperatures outside will raise two to five degrees more than what the average temperature will be around away from the solar farms, which in turn will cause heat, more heat, us to use more energy in our homes for our AC. The demand on the AC will raise our price up of paying for energy because I don't believe that the energy that you guys are going to be getting from these solar panels is going to benefit Wilcox in any way. We'll still be using fossil fuels. I know you say you got the batteries that are going to do that. But if we keep raising our prices, they're still going to have to use fossil fuels, which in turn is going to affect greenhouse gas effects. The the heat islands can also be damaging to people's health and property with more heat. It'll create a ground-level ozone, fine particulate matter, acid rain, volatile organic compounds, and nitrogen oxides to react to sunlight and hot weather. In other words, the sunnier and hotter it is, the more ground ozone that we will have. It's for every, it'll increase the demand 1 to 9% every time one of these heat islands come across our property. And the rural areas is two to five degrees Fahrenheit more than what our heat. I repeat myself. I apologize. Okay, we do get a lot of extreme heat events here in Wilcox, Arizona, which would, like I said, more demand on our electric bills, we'll be paying more for it. The electric companies will have to be using more fossil fuels to maintain our our standard. And the last thing is the human health comfort. Older adults mostly and young children are most vulnerable to the heat, which raises the heat. They'll be more vulnerable to it. And people in poor health, like my neighbor, Mr. Stockdale. He's already got health problems now. He's retired. He doesn't need anymore. And the other issue I have is for privacy. When they start building this thing, there's going to be people straying off the construction site, going over into our property, you know. We're going to put up no trespassing signs. If they come, they will call the sheriff and have them prosecuted. I don't know how they're going to work, you know, when it's operational. But like, you know, I just don't want people coming in and bugging our properties. I don't think I have anything further to say, man.
Thank you, Mr. Myers, very much. Next to speak, please, Mr. Field, Ms. Field. You're going to share your five minutes? Please come. State your names and address before you speak, please.
My name is Frau Field. There's 1877 Collins Lane, Wilcox, Arizona. My concern is.
My name is Brandon Field, 1877 South Collins Lane, Wilcox, Arizona.
Yeah, we have 10 acres next to the, this, this next the proposal. And the concern is my husband is a veteran. And and even the neighbors is ex-military veterans too. And 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 the last cave, sorry, the psychiatrists, because my husband is in the, and they're in the war in Iraq, and have PTSD. And the psychiatrists say needs someplace peaceful. And and this area is is beautiful. And you saw all the the birds difference. And and you can say, saw the the turkeys. And it's beautiful. And now the backyard issue constructs this, this proposal looks like a city. And and affect us the the view, the landscape. This is one concern. And second concern is just say about the wildlife. We've we saw tourists, we saw beautiful birds, blue. Honestly, I don't, I don't, I don't, it's what can a bird, but fly every, every season. And it's beautiful birds. And then the habitat degradation with this new facility of all the tourists, all the, this clean the area and maybe remove the habitat for the, for this species. I don't know. Do you need more of that?
My main concern is the view. It's that our kitchen window and our dining window faces the freeway. And that's always seen. That's all we're going to see is over panels. And we we've had this house for 60 years. This is my, my retirement was going to get passed on to my 12-year-old daughter for her to have a nice place to grow her family too. And I I just don't, I don't see it worth it, to be honest with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone online that has commentary?
We have several folks that are online. Is there anybody wishing to speak on this item this evening?
Hearing none. This is a time for the applicant's rebuttal. Ms. Born, if you'd like to make comment.
So I I appreciate time to to have a discussion. Often, we like to engage in the the concerns that we heard just now from the neighbors in advance this so we can offer up solutions. But in kind of listening to those concerns today, what we would like to do is try to summarize what we heard. And then I think we have one additional condition or one solution that we would like to propose tonight. So if I may summarize, I think there was concerns that I heard about property values, proximity from homes to our parcel boundary, the concept of of a heat island, and then kind of wildlife concerns in general. I think I'll just the the last one first, which is kind of the wildlife point. We have committed already to working with the state to make sure that we have the appropriate wildlife corridors and also ensuring that there is the appropriate investigation in terms of wildlife to mitigate as much, if not all, of the impact by by the project. The other categories that I just summarized have a lot to do with proximity to to our parcel boundary. From the investigation that we did, the folks who spoke, and I'm sorry, the the family from Collins Lane, we haven't done the exact measurement, but we're approximately a quarter of a mile away from those homes. I think our proposal is to pull our boundary another quarter of a mile from them just to make that a half a mile and have that be even that more of a significant impact. I think if there is any property values, we're now much closer to that one-mile threshold that was mentioned earlier, as well as creating another wildlife corridor on the east side of the project. And then ultimately, if there is a heat island effect, that's even further mitigated by 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 that amount. So I would like to propose that here, that we actually are reducing our parcel boundary on that northeast side of the square, just pull the whole thing back. That land itself is owned by the state. It's Arizona state land. So essentially, what we're doing is we are shrinking our lease from them. So it's it's not something that we can offer here real time and and react to the community concerns. I'll I'll just one more point that I think is an important one, which is kind of voicing trespassing the property rights. There will be a fence on this property. If folks who are building it trespass on neighbor's land, that is trespassing, they should be arrested, right? And so everyone who works for with us has to obey all laws. We can't do anything that is against the the rules here from the federal level all the way down. And so, you know, it is our utmost concern that folks aren't wandering off, you know, especially if the project is being built on the west side of the project and somehow they wander a mile or two east, that's probably grounds for being fired, right? So I guess with that, I'll step aside or I can address any other questions that that folks may have.
I'm sure we'll have questions if you'll give us a minute. Thank you. No one showed up online?
We have people online, but I don't see anybody raising the hand and no one responded earlier when requested.
Okay. I now declare the public hearing closed. This is a time for commission discussion. You may ask questions of the applicant or staff. Please clarify when asking your question who you want to answer. Questions?
Madam Chair, I have at least one question of the applicant.
Mr. Lindbach?
So your application states you use environmentally safe polymers, soil stabilization and reseeding efforts to mitigate dust and erosion. Can you please explain environmentally safe polymers and what soil stabilization efforts are?
So soil stabilization polymers are materials that, and I can't tell you exactly what they are off the top of my head right now, but they're materials that we use to help vegetation grow. So once a solar facility is constructed, and this is actually a great picture right here. This is the Red Horse Solar Farm. So this is the one that currently exists down the road. So as we all know, in Arizona, getting vegetation to grow isn't always the easiest thing. So you often have to use additional soil amendments and that sort of thing to enhance grass coverage.
Thank you.
Shall I stay or stop down?
You could stay, please.
Okay.
Mr. McGonigal?
I do have a few questions. Dial me back if it seems necessary, please, if you don't mind. And I would say with this kind of project, the most questions I ever get from the public are environmental. And then there are on the page with factors against. I'm not going there, but the first one is something called fugitive dust. Seems like I I live in fugitive dust, but I don't know the definition. Could the staff tell me what is fugitive dust?
It's dust that arises from one site and invades another. Yeah.
Like on me, okay. That would happen in any construction project. In Southern Cochise County. In southern Cochise County, the wind is dominantly from the south to the northeast. Is it the same up there in Wilcox, I mean?
It is, yes. I looked that up.
So it's blowing away from residents and away from Wilcox and into the wildlands, right? Mostly?
I haven't looked at that specifically.
I just want to interject. The biggest fugitive dust or whatever creation is the dry lake. Look, today, this is blowing off the dry lake into Wilcox. That's, you know, federal government owns that.
So I've been nearly suffocated in times in the past during a construction project somewhere else when dust was just overwhelmed in the neighborhood. But it went away when they got done, you know? Or if it was too windy, they stopped construction. I don't know what the terms are for this project, but I do see that it's blowing away from the population. Am I right? Mostly? No?
Yeah, unfortunately, I can't answer that. Maybe the applicant can.
I think it depends on, on the day, right? If it's blowing up from the southwest, it's gonna blow up to the northeast. Sometimes it blows to the north, sometimes it blows to the east or west.
That's actually the least of my questions. I'll try to be coherent here. I had questions on that and number three and four, which are environmental. You did talk about birds.
Yes.
Okay. And I get more questions about birds than anything else. So could you quickly rerun that for me?
I could rerun that for you. I'll try to see what I can remember from the, I mean, I can remember most of it from the slide. But, you know, when we first started talking to Christine about this project, she said everyone's, you know, one of the biggest concerns was definitely gonna be impacts to birds because of the Wilcox play up. So we had our environmental consultants put together some reports and we submitted them to Arizona Game and Fish. And over the last few months have been working with Arizona Game and Fish to look at, you know, what our reports found, what they think, what they're seeing out there and what they think we should do. And that's where we came up with the list of concessions to work with them, where, you know, panel rows will be a minimum of 12 feet apart. There will be six to eight inches of spacing below the fencing so critters can get in and out and move and traverse the site. We'll put in a wildlife corridor if Arizona Game and Fish and BDOT decide that going through our site is a place where that needs to be. We'll put space around existing culverts crossing I-10 so critters can go through those. Trying to think of a couple other things here. I think that might be it. I think one of the things Game and Fish, you know, they had some concerns about some water birds that might land. But they did say that, you know, they have no evidence that water birds do land on panels. At this point, it's all conjecture. And as long as our panels are spaced 12 feet apart, they don't see that being a problem.
Okay. Thank you. That is associated with the ground critters?
Yeah.
And you just, that's part of that. And from your other photograph there, it looked like plenty of room that they could transit if they get through the fence.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Including larger entrance.
Yes, very much so.
And can I tell everybody that they're not endangered?
I don't, I don't feel like they're, they're endangered. I mean, unfortunately, human civilization always poses some sort of impact to wildlife, right? But given the fact that it's on Highway 10 and there's already a major highway right there, one thing I want to highlight too, just going back to the dust and also relates to the wildlife, is that this, the first phase of this project is 160 megawatts. So that's about 1,600 acres of construction. And so this project would be built in phases. So as it relates to dust and as it relates to wildlife, the impacts would happen incrementally and not all at once. And I think one thing for the neighbors, and we would love to talk with you all, is that construction will start in that southwesterlymost area. So a few miles away from where all of you live, or whatever that's worth. But we would love to talk with you more.
Last question, thank you, then. Is about the atmospheric changes, the heat in particular. Do these, you know, I have not seen a study, I have not dedicated a study on that. Can you tell me about?
I have seen studies making an argument on both sides. It's a tricky one, right? We were walking along the highway yesterday to check out the access point that we'll be using because the, the off-ramp was closed and so we had to walk along the highway. I will say that walking along a highway is a lot, 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 lot hotter than walking through a row of solar panels. I was just on a site yesterday where we did a ribbon cutting and we did a tour of the whole site. And it was no hotter walking through the rows of panels than it was, you know, out in the fields. So my experience is no. I would love to see a definitive study. Maybe we should just go out there and take some temperatures on a few days and see the difference. But I have yet to see anything definitive.
Okay. Think maybe my last question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, it is?
It is. I have one more. It's more of a comment, actually. In regard to that, the heat and those folks concerned about it. You know that a, a new port of entry has been approved in Douglas. Sooner than later, there's going to be major traffic from Douglas up 191 to I-10.
I've heard about this.
Yes, quite a lot. And, and that will have some influence on your neighborhood as well. And hopefully we can all figure out ways to make it positive. But I'm just saying, there's gonna be a lot of changes in that neighborhood. More traffic, more people, more commerces, et cetera. This is off the highway though, apparently not even visible from I-10.
It is visible from I-10. As it stands now, there's I-10, right? We're on the north side of I-10. There's an existing transmission line that runs about 100 feet from I-10. And so we'll probably be just north of that transmission line. There's, having driven it yesterday, there's quite a bit of vegetation out there. It won't be, it won't be, and I don't believe it'll be an eyesore.
Okay. Big question by many people. All the time, not just this project, but any type of project like that. It's always environmental. What about the birds? What about the critters, you know? About the kids? We have to address that.
Yes, understand.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. Mr. Marzky, you have any questions?
No, I have.
Mr. Watkins?
I have a few, if I can remember them. I didn't write them down. What's the lifespan of this project?
Um, so these projects are, let's, usually you do a power purchase agreement for 20 years. Solar panels and supporting equipment with support and maintenance can last up to 15 years. I'm sorry, 50, not 15. So it really depends. At some point, you can always repower the plant, replace equipment, that sort of thing as time goes on.
Would there be a chance it was ever just abandoned and left?
It would never be abandoned and left. One, because your county requires a decommissioning agreement where we put down a security deposit. For that reason alone, I mean, I would never want to stand behind something, but, you know, I might not be alive in 50 years. But that's why we do those things.
You touched on it, you know, the off-ramp being closed. How's this gonna impede your process or what you're doing until the ADOT rebuilds that bridge?
Well, we're hoping to not start construction until, well, we're definitely not starting construction until next year. So we're working with ADOT right now and have been reaching out to them and talking with them.
And last question, where's this power going?
This power is going up north Tucson area. Not to say that it can't. So right now, it's not all going up there. And Christine brought this up. But Scott has been in conversations with Sulphur Springs. So it's entirely possible that some of the other phases could go to Sulphur Springs in the future.
Well, I know they all purchase power from each others.
Exactly.
When I mentioned, when I mentioned we've been working on technical studies since 2020, they take a really, really long time. So we are in a study right now with, with Arizona G and T, which is the wholesale purchase provider for Sulphur Springs and all those co-ops. And so we're a little bit behind in that study process, but it's kind of our intention to work on our, you know, relationships with other cooperatives that we worked on in, in southern Arizona and sell this power to them. The, um, the actual practical, what, what happens to the electrons, though? Because that's actually contractual, what we're talking about. The actual physical delivery of these electrons go to the nearest point, which is here. And for those who don't know, the Apache coal facility is, is currently rarely dispatched. And so there, there is value to the community here in Cochise County to have in a power generation source in addition to what already exists.
Mr. Saunders?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Lindbach?
Oh, one more question. What happens to the decommissioned, broken malfunctioning pieces, parts? Where, where do they go? Do they remain, are they buried in Arizona somewhere?
No, they're not, because we have to comply with the local permitting here, but we also have to comply with all federal laws, right? So we can't just go burying waste in our backyard. So there's, there's kind of the, the legal aspect of it. The other aspect of this is the, the industry of recycling all this equipment. The main component that we're focused on as an industry is a solar module. Everything else is really just copper and steel. So basically, having that as salvage value is something we figured out a long time ago. And as projects are now 10, 15, 20 years old, that equipment is being recycled and that industry is ramping up here in the United States. So that, those, those project, the panels that, that are broken will just be taken off and then sent to a place to be recycled or reused. Because, you know, it was mentioned earlier, just because a module is old doesn't mean that it's not working, right? So you could have a module that is 80% effective from how it was originally installed, but someone still wants that, it's just basically a free solar panel. So there is an aftermarket for, for these types of panels.
Thank you.
Mr. Young, do you have any questions?
I'd like to ask, how do you guys address the question on the water usage?
Sarah, I can, oh, that was really loud. I can take that one. Water usage, so, you know, during construction, as concerns for dust are very important, we do use water trucks to keep dust under control. And as far as long-term water use in our current projects in Arizona, and having been on one yesterday that we, that came online five years ago, we have not had to wash those panels once. Panel degradation hasn't fallen, or hasn't even gotten close to that 3%. So to date, I do not know a project in the last 10 years where we have had to put water on solar panels.
Thank you.
Mr.?
Yeah, thank you. My last question, I promise, okay? In your other projects around Arizona or elsewhere, have things worked out as, as you planned? I'm sure there's always been some environmental concern. But you've always addressed it, things have moved ahead and gone on smoothly, I would assume, right?
They have, so far luckily. Yes.
Any problems have been resolved or readings have been had and worked out?
Yes, very much so. We take a lot of pride in what we do and working, working with people and interested parties in the community, for sure.
And I also think that here would have hurt. If we were a really bad actor up in Antelope Valley, like there, we would have had a reputation, right? I don't, you can't have a big project like this and, and not be, and, and be a poor neighbor and not have someone here in this commission here, right? So I, I think that there is, uh, there's a history here that we can point to on mic saying, hey, we're, we're just good guys. We're here to make everyone stay perfect, right? Hope that we, we behave in that way that, that we have in the past.
Thank you for that.
I do have one last question. A lot, there's a good portion of this is state land. And you're leasing it, so therefore the rancher lost the grazing leases. And, you know, you're, you're taking his, part of his livelihood. Not you per se, but, you know, I don't know how it happens. I do-
It's a good point. And I, I think you make a really good point. And, which is the dynamic that I mentioned earlier, right? Because if you are, when you look at Arizona state lands, you look at it basically on what, how many head are supported on, on a per-section basis. And when you look up in, in places like the Antelope Valley, that's actually like eight to 12 head per section. In this location, it's like 0.5 to 1. And so the, the carrying capacity on this land is, is quite low. The other aspect of this is that the, the grazing lessee is also the, the fee land owner. So we are, we are purchasing both in, in, if, if you will. We'll, we'll lease the land from the state and the state likes that because a solar lease is considerably more than a grazing lease. And so that's a priority in, in the state land system because all of that money goes to support the school system. So they want to make as much money as they can. So they will always lease to a solar company above a, a cattle rancher. But then we have kind of an additional layer on there where we are absorbing kind of that whole ranching area, which isn't great ranching to begin with, from a single rant lessee, if you will.
Okay. In essence, you're buying the ranch.
Right.
Including state land.
That's right.
I'm a rancher, by no accident.
Anyone else? Before the chair takes over? I have a question. You mentioned possibly negotiating a half-mile boundary. Would that apply to future phases or just this phase?
So if, if we could pull up the parcel boundary here. So if you look on that easternmost boundary of this map, the northeasternmost corner, the folks that spoke tonight are located on that, that corner. So we would just permanently move that one quarter mile to the west.
And you would not use that area in a future phase?
Ever. It's completely off approval tonight for a special use. That's our proposal to you all.
All right. Staff will work that out with you. I'm greatly conflicted about solar fields. It's the way of it. However, I don't want Cochise County to be the source for every other place. And that seems to be what you're building here. Beyond the construction phase, Cochise County will not benefit from this. And solar panels are called renewables, but they die in 20 years. So that's a concern to me too. That doesn't make any sense. That power plant's been in good shape for a long time, both with gas and, and coal. Having said that, Cochise County has a renewable energy plan. And I'd like to ask Christine to read that for us. And then also to brief us on the decommissioning aspect. What happens when this thing does die?
I just- Absolutely. Make one clarification. Our, our contracts sell the power is usually 20 years.
Sure.
The warranty on these projects is 25 and the expected lifetime is closer to 40 or 50 years. And that's about the age of, of the Apache coal facility right now, which-
Naturally, that's better, but it is still remarkably short. There's so much hazardous product to recycle. That's my point, just a comment.
Well, you understand, I just wanted to make sure we were just getting those-
Good. Thank you.
Um, in terms of what we have in our comprehensive plan, our renewable energy element is devoted towards encouraging local renewable energy products and technologies. The policies include encouraging utility-scale renewable energy projects using the University of Arizona's Renewable Energy Opportunity Analysis and other resources as a guide for determining suitability of proposals. Any one location, encourage renewable energy business development, support renewable energy employment training opportunities, local colleges, and permit flexible site development standards. Another goal is to foster a development climate where increased energy efficiency is encouraged. And that relates a little bit less to this project. And that relates a little bit less to this project. It's more so the first element.
I just wanted the commission to hear that that is established county. It's part of our plan. The decommissioning, can you make sure the commissioners understand that?
Okay, and this relates, and the commission probably remembers, a few months ago, we updated our requirements for solar energy power plants. One of the provisions we included was a requirement for decommissioning and site restoration. All applications for solar energy power plants and applications, meaning building permits, must include a decommissioning plan acceptable to the county to ensure all system components are properly decommissioned upon the end of their operational life, cessation of use, or determination of abandonment. The decommissioning plan shall state how the facility will be decommissioned and will include a professional engineer's estimated cost of decommissioning, the financial resources to be used to accomplish decommissioning, and the financial assurances necessary to fund it. Removal of the system shall include, but not be strictly limited to the following: all above-ground components, including the solar arrays, transformers, battery energy solar storage systems, above-ground collection cables, poles, fencing, everything. Foundation buried project components other than buried collection lines must be removed to a depth of 36 inches. Buried collection lines must be removed. Also to a depth of 36 inches, collection lines below 36 inches may remain in place. Removal activities must be completed within one year of the decommissioning, unless otherwise approved by the county. And then we also include restoration requirements. Ground disturbance must be minimized to the extent practical. Disturbed soils and vegetation will be reasonably restored and reestablished using native seed mix and proper soil nutrients to provide sustained growth and coordination with the landowner to allow desired vegetation to be planted. Roads must be adequately restored to original condition following decommissioning if they were in place. Access roads, fencing, associated drainage improvements, residual minor improvements may remain. And there is required to be removal and remediation of any hazardous materials.
Thank you. Do you have that map of the solar sites currently in Cochise County? I also wanted to remind the commission of what we've got going already. What's under proposal or completed?
And while Robert's bringing up, this is a graphic I prepared as part of the rewriting of the regulations. It essentially shows in red where we have construction, solar energy power plants already in Cochise County. The green are ones that have been approved. And actually, if you see 191, that southern one, that's the McNeil Solar. That's currently under construction. We are, we have been in talks with several people interested, specifically more so in the Wilcox area, for incoming potential applications.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any further questions? Thank you. I think we're finished. This time, I'd like to ask Ms. McLaughlin for the summary and recommendation.
My apologies. We have somebody online that is requesting to speak. I explained to them that the public hearing has already been closed.
You, staff recommends conditional approval. If the commission wishes to grant approval, staff recommends the following conditions. Condition one, the project owner shall maintain the project site with perennial vegetated ground cover, non-compacted soil. Grading is not required during project construction. Any existing vegetation will be mowed, rather than removed completely. Condition two, the project owner shall exclusively use PV panels with anti-reflectivity coating that is integral to the panel. Condition three, all panels shall be regularly inspected, continuously maintained by the project owner. Any broken or damaged panels shall be properly, safely removed in a timely manner from the site. Condition four, to reduce the optical illusion of water that closely spaced panels can create, the project shall be designed with no less than a 12-foot distance between all track per rows. Condition five, the applicant shall submit a completed wetland delineation confirmed by the Army Corps prior to commercial permit issuance. Wetland features shall be avoided except where crossings are needed for roads and cables. Condition six, to the extent feasible, non-fenced wildlife corridors within project boundaries shall be reserved near washes. Or in areas determined by game and fish to be appropriate for wildlife highway crossing. Condition seven, the final locations of proposed substation battery energy storage system may deviate from what's indicated on the concept plan, provided each are located within project boundaries, a minimum of half-mile from I-10. Condition eight, pursuant to 182403 of the zoning regulations, which mandates wildlife-friendly fencing, the applicant shall reserve a 6-inch, 8-inch gap between the ground surface and the bottom of the perimeter fencing. Condition nine, the commission grants a waiver from setbacks required to internal parcel boundaries. Instead, minimum setbacks of 40 feet shall only be applied to the exterior boundary of the project. And as we just discussed, the applicant has offered condition 10. The applicant shall provide an additional buffer on the northeast property boundary in the amount of 1/4 mile to the west for perpetuity of the project. Condition, standard conditions related to acceptance of conditions permitting transference modifications apply and have not been modified by this request. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any additional questions. There's a sample motion on the slide for the commission's consideration.
I call for the motion.
Mr. Chairman, Madam Chairman.
Mr. Marzky.
I move to approve DACA 2311 Winchester Solar with the conditions of approval and waivers requested and recommended by staff. Factors of favor of approval constitute the findings in fact.
Is second?
Yes, I will second that.
Mr. Montgomery, thank you. Is there any further discussion of this motion?
Oh, Madam Chair.
Mr. Lindbach?
I think I, being relatively new, I misunderstood. I, looks like the board comment phase was kind of mixed with the questions.
Do you want to make a statement at this point?
I would, yes.
Feel free. This is the time for discussion before we vote.
No, I apologize. Thank you. According to the Arizona Game and Fish Department, the Wilcox Playa, Cochise Lakes area is home to many migratory birds, such as the sandhill crane, and are within 1.5 miles of the proposed solar field. These cranes and other migratory species would be required to fly over or near the solar field to reach the Wilcox Playa. The Game and Fish Department expressed concern that the lake effect could cause injury and death to many avian species, including the sandhill cranes, which are estimated to have been migrating to the Wilcox Playa for more than 2 million years. I have concerns that such a large-scale project could negatively impact Wings Over Wilcox, which is a popular multi-month annual burning festival, bringing tens of thousands of visitors and earning tremendous revenue for Wilcox and local communities throughout Southern Arizona. The Game and Fish Department indicates bald and golden eagles have been documented within five miles of the proposed project and identifies the Sonora Desert tortoise as residing within the proposed project area. The Game and Fish Department recommends additional avian surveys to better understand the effects such a project could have on area fauna. On behalf of the applicant, the SWCA Biological Evaluation concluded that the proposed project would have no effect on any endangered species in the area. The report did acknowledge that the project may impact individual animals under some government protection, but is unlikely to produce an overall downward trend regarding the prosperity of these species. When addressing the Bald and Golden Eagles Act, the SWCA report acknowledges the possible presence of eagles in the survey area, but states, quote, "The loss of foraging habitat from construction of this project would be extremely minor, as individuals of both species of eagles would be expected to shift their use to other locations within the vicinity." Field reconnaissance of the survey area was completed on March 20, 2023, during windy conditions, during which only nine avian species were observed, each of which is protected by the Migratory Bird Treaty Act. March is outside the migratory bird season, making it impossible to achieve a practical survey of local avian populations that might be impacted by this project. That concludes my statement, and I'm sorry for getting out of.
I think we were completely in order. Thank you, Mr. Lindbach. We have a motion on the floor. We'll do a roll call vote.
Madam Chairman, if I could interject, if the commission does wish to vote against the motion that is currently on the floor, if they could provide a rationale, it would be appreciated.
Mr. Montgomery?
I will not vote against it. I will vote aye.
Mr. Lindbach?
No. In my opinion, the SWCA report minimizes the potential harm to endangered and protected species and should conduct reconnaissance surveys, at least quarterly for one year, before making any conclusions on the effect such a project could have on area flora and fauna. I cannot support this project without more information.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Marzky?
Aye.
And Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We have one dissenting vote. This motion passes. To appeal this motion, please speak to staff, the planner, within 15 days to be heard at the Board of Supervisors meeting. Thank you. It is time for the Planning Director's Report. Mr. Coxworth?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. If there is a desire for a member of the public to appeal this decision, the forms can be picked up on your way out, I believe. Oh, yeah, sorry. So there was a recent appeal heard by the Board of Supervisors. You heard it a few months ago, but it had to be tabled. It was a Sirota guest lodging. If you recall, he had a commercial riding stable, and he was requesting a special use for additional sites for camping. You voted against it, the commission voted against it. The applicant did appeal it to the Board of Supervisors, and the Board of Supervisors upheld your decision, so they denied the applicant's appeal. I think we talked about.
Did you have a vote on that?
It was unanimous.
Unanimously.
And we'll talk about Kaibab, and I'm just not, it's not coming to me, but next month, we do have three special uses. RV mini-storage and airstrip and a feed store. And then we have two, one reversion of zoning, and then one downzoning. So five dockets in June, and we have a couple scheduled for July already as well. What's the Kaibab?
Yeah, the Kaibab, we had two appeals since the last time we met. And the Kaibab one, that was, I think, in March. That was for the 5,000-square-foot manufacturing. One of the neighbors did appeal it. The board unanimously approved the application. And again, the board upheld your decision. So in both cases, the board has supported your decisions unanimously.
Thank you.
I think that's notable, notable that our Board of Supervisors does support us, so we have to take this very, very seriously, and I think we do that well. Is there anything else, Mr. Coxworth?
No, thank you.
Call to the commissioners. Anything anyone would like to say or bring up?
Oh, you're asking me?
Sure, Robert, you always come up with something.
I do appreciate Commissioner Lindbach's statements on the last item. There are concerns about that stuff, and there's going to be more as those type of projects come in here. And so they are valid. The quarterly report, I thought that was pretty, pretty interesting. We might consider that later. But it is, you know, we just decided to go with it. We still have room in Cochise County for these projects. That may not always be the case as they continue to come in here, but right now we do. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we're done.